...at 6:30 PM. Please silence your cell phones and any other electronic devices. Also, if you're not at the podium speaking in citizen comments or on an agenda topic during citizen comments, please do not speak, whisper, or anything. The officers will just come, tap you on the shoulder, and they're going to ask you to leave the meeting. We're not going to have a disturbance this evening in tonight's meeting. Please stand for the prayer by Reverend Blanks and the pledge by Councilman College.
[Inaudible] And we come for your grace. Just thank you for being here. Thank you for keeping us up to another day, John. And we send him here after we your guidance, Father Father. And we continue to move forward with better news. City, after the prayer, we pray for the mayor and pray for the county, pray for the citizens, Father Father. We come again last one, and we go forth with, Father Father, me, the city, you, God, we think we not only pray for Georgia, but we pray for our neighbors, city of Mark, and the rest of that, but thank you about that torn there yesterday. No, I got like a current city, David, we come back with this dawn trying to take from this in Jesus name, we pray and ask. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the red flag for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Blanks, and thank you Councilman College. Before we start, if anybody has citizen comments and they want to speak during citizen comments, please fill out the form that's in the entryway there, and that way we can go sequentially down as we have citizen comments. Thank you.
We will go down that list when we collect it. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Mr. Anderson. Ms. Shancy, any changes by you?
No.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the gender order approval? Motion by Councilman Galloch, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jackson, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our announcements. You want to say, Mr. Ankersen is going to say, Ms. Shancy is participating by phone due to a prior engagement.
Thank you, Mayor. The Gochay Farmers Market will be held the second Saturday of every month from May through September, starting at 8:00 AM until 12:00 PM at George Martin City Park. Old School Tutoring and Toys and Gochay's Recreation Team will host Wacky Wednesdays, a weekly half summer camp, starting every Wednesday, June 7th through July 12th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Gochay's Indoor Sports Club. Tasty Thursday will be June 22nd, starting at 11:00 AM at the former Singing River Mall property. City offices will be closed Tuesday, July 4th, in observance of Independence Day. And the July council meeting will be held on Wednesday, July 5th, due to Independence Day, rather than on Tuesday.
Thank you, Mr. Ankersen. We don't have a presentation agenda. That brings us to our business agenda item number one, approval of a task order relating to the professional services agreement with Seymour Engineering for the Town Commons Park Phase Two, Ms. Shancy. Are you going to do it? Okay.
These are engineering professional meetings related to Town Commons Park Phase Two, and that's what the law is. Amphitheater seating, great lawn, decorative dancing, landscape architecture, access roadway, sidewalk sliding, electrical water sewer, and ready drainage. The engineering services.
Thank you, Ms. Sashir. Do we have any public comments on this agenda item? No. Do we have a motion from council to approve task order number seven related to the professional services agreement with Seymour Engineering for the Town Commons Phase Two, an amount not to exceed $372,250?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Galloch?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No comment.
All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number two, authorization to approve a task order number five, rate study to the general services agreement between Wagner Engineering and the city of Gochay. Are you taking this, Ms. Sashir, or Ms. Shancy? Ms. Shancy?
Yes, sir. Your last rate study is done, I believe, in 2018, and it's time for us to do another one, and y'all had the question just to be done, and Wagner has agreed to update your prior rate study for the same amount as the original one, which is $15,000.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Shancy. Any public comments on business agenda item number two? No. Do we have a motion from council to authorize to approve task order number five, the right study to the general services agreement between Wagner Engineering and the city of Gochay?
I make a motion to approve task order not to exceed $15,000.
Got a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Alvin, any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No comment.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Galloch?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No comment.
All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number three, authorization to acknowledge bids and award contract for the Town Commons Park Phase Two Amphitheater Great Lawn by Ms. Sashir.
We received one bid from Fletcher Construction, who's out doing the amphitheater right now, for the great lawn, and the one bid was $2,888,000. That was a bit higher than we had hoped, so through some value engineering and deductive alternate, that came down to $2,548,500. So we're requesting acknowledgement of bid and then award a contract in the amount not to exceed $2,548,500.
Thank you, Ms. Sashir. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number three? Do we have a motion by council, authorization to acknowledge the receipt of one bid for the Town Commons Park Phase Two Amphitheater Grand Lawn from Fletcher Construction Company for $2,548,500 following deductive alternate and award a contract to Fletcher Construction in an amount not to exceed $2,548,500? That's the lowest investment bid.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Galloch, any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
We're getting closer and closer to this fantastic facility getting done.
Thank you. Councilman Galloch?
Not at this time.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes. So while we have only one bid, what, are we advertising out to other contractors to get lower bids?
Sir, that was, if I may, that was advertised as required by law, and we advertise all other bids. A lot of it may have had to do with the type of work and the fact that it was kind of a combination of sidewalks and various specialties, and Fletcher Construction was already out there already, and probably sharpened their pencil a bit.
Okay. No other comments?
Councilman George?
No comment.
We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Galloch, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number four, consideration of a special exception that would allow an accessory structure to be located on a lot without a primary structure in an R1 low-density single-family residential district at 1404 Park Drive, Gochay, Mississippi, GPC number 23-16-SE, PID number 87110396.000, by our planning director, Mr. Scott Ankersen.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning department has received this request from David Lipscomb for a special exception that would allow an accessory structure to be located on a lot without a primary structure in an R1 low-density single-family residential district. The application fee of $250 was paid on March 9, 2023, and all public notice requirements have been met. This is approximately 0.55 acre site. Its current surrounding zoning is low-density single-family residential. The comprehensive plan's future land use designation is low-density residential. I've included in your packet the review criteria for a special exception is outlined in Section 4.16.14 of the Unified Development Ordinance. Upon hearing this case, the planning commission recommends the city council approve the request based on the evidence presented, meeting criteria of the Unified Development Ordinance. The city council may approve the special exception. Approve the special exception with changes or deny the special exception. I've included the excerpt from the meeting from 6/1/2023 with the complete packet and also the applicants here tonight answering questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ankersen. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number four? Do we have a motion by council?
Make a motion we approve a special exception that would allow an accessory structure to be located on a lot without a primary structure in an R1 low-density single-family residential district, 1404 Park Drive, Gochay, Mississippi, GPC 23-16-SE.
We got a motion by Councilman Galloch, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
I do. I know we've had some applications in the past for this type of situation, primary structure, I mean, accessory structure, such as a boathouse without a primary structure. And in the past, we've denied it. We actually kind of gone against that a little bit recently, requiring that at least it be adjacent or directly across the street. So I'd like to hear what the applicant has proposed for that property in addition to the accessory structure before the council makes a decision.
Is he here?
Yes.
Can I approach?
Yes, absolutely.
Got some handouts here of what they're proposing to do.
And Mr. Lipscomb, Mr. Lipscomb, would you just type your name and address when you go there?
My name is David Lipscomb. I'm in 2800, selling an acre and acre of the property until I take it here in Gochay at 1404 Park Drive. We're wanting to put the boathouse there so that we can utilize our property. We've had about a year, and we intend to put a home on there at some point in the future. We've included in your handout there a brief sketch of what we'd like to do, but we would like, you know, be able to use the property. Right now, we've got it cleaned up, and we'd like to be able to leave our boat there during this time of year until it sets time that, you know, we can come down and put a home in place.
Okay. What do you think your timeframe's going to be to? When do you feel will be the timeframe for when you will construct your home, a home down here, a primary structure?
I'd sell the place in Van Cleve, probably. Within, within three years for sure.
Within three years for sure? Do you intend on bringing any RVs or overnight camping or anything during that?
None whatsoever.
None whatsoever. The reason I have these concerns is we've had, so I don't want to set a precedent to where, you know, we start getting a lot of these applications, to where we have, you know, lots on the water that they clear cut and just put a boathouse on there.
We're looking at about $50,000 investment right now.
Right now, with the boat lift and all that stuff right there.
Between that and the boat here.
Josh, are we able to add stipulations to a special exception?
Yes, sir, you are. However, Scott, I want to make sure that we can take the right one. Is this a special exception? This runs with the land?
Yes, will use with the land.
Okay, so this does not run with the land, you can put stipulations on it.
Okay.
As far as timeframe.
Timeframe and all that stuff.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's the only questions I have currently. Okay. Councilman Galloch?
You mentioned that you, when you sell your house in Van Cleve, do you have it on the market now? Not right now. I ain't got a preview. But, and I'll be honest, may not sell it, may just build and have one of those places. But... You want to save a lot of money? No, I got good credit. No, I appreciate it. I'm in that neighborhood. I've been there 37 years. Well, we, I used to teach in high school school system back in the 80s and early 90s. We lived in Pointe Clear. We've had three children graduate from the high school school, so we're very familiar with this area, familiar with Seckley area, and... Who's the previous owner of that lot? I can't recall right now. Do you know who the previous owner was of the lot you purchased? The gentleman I purchased from, his name was Rice, and I don't know who he bought it from, but he was a Chevron operator, I think, that he was recently retired, and I bought it from him last summer. He was wanting to build a home, excuse me, and for whatever reason, I don't know why he did it, but he chose to build somewhere up in the East Central School District or somewhere up there. Well, I sure hope he built a beautiful home in there looking forward to it. Well, that's the plan. We like the view and we like the property. Well, I'm up on the north end of the bay. Yeah, I'm tired of trying to load my boat in and out of the water. I want to just go get on. Just for moments, three years. Should be watching. I ain't, I'm, I've already got some work going on there.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No comment.
I've got a couple of follow-up questions.
Okay.
You are going to have to run electricity to operate the boat lift, and then I saw in the minutes from, the excerpt from the planning commission that you potentially get water.
I've already been to Gochay City, there and talked to them about that, as opposed to a shallow well and getting of the...
An irrigation meter or something there?
Yeah, 8,000 gallon allotment or whatever, so, yeah, I've talked to them briefly about that.
So as far as our planning, our planning director and our city attorney, if we set a stipulation of three years, that he has to build, pull a permit to build a primary structure, if he doesn't, then how do we go about?
It would, that would be a city kind of question. I can say that we can't, we have no control over turning off the power, if that's what you're asking. That would be a single power issue.
What you're asking is, what if three years pass, the boathouse is built, there's no primary structure?
That's correct.
If, if you set a sunset date on the special exception, then you could arguably require improvement of the house.
I don't think it would do that.
Well, we should have precedent if, if you don't. If we just allow, you know, a property owner to build accessory structure, I mean, where does it stop? I mean, you don't...
Give him an add-on in there, no mobile homes or camp trailers or anything like that to hook to the temporary power, but let's not make him tear the thing down being built three years. We don't know what could happen in three years. The covenants in Seckley, I think you have to have a minimum of 1,200 square feet, I don't?
Well, we, we don't go by restrictive covenants in the city of Gochay. We go by 1325 on R1 structure, as required. So, I mean, do you think three years is, is...
Very reasonable.
Very reasonable? I'd like to amend the motion, and I think I'll do two different amendments, just in case one doesn't pass the other one. The first amendment would be no recreational vehicles to be staged overnight while there's strictly an accessory structure on there. I make a motion to, to amend the motion to that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman College to amend the motion to no recreational vehicles to stay overnight. Do we have a second to the amendment?
Second.
Second by Councilman Galloch. We're going to vote on the first, the amendment, all in favor?
All right. My second, my second amendment would be that this special exception be granted under the conditions that a building permit for a primary structure be pulled within three years of this date.
We have an amendment to be, that a building permit had to be requested, be pulled within three years of date of the application for the boathouse. Do we have a second to that amendment?
Second.
Second to that amendment by Councilman Galloch, all in favor? All any oppose? Councilman Anderson opposed, all rest were A's, motion carries. And back to the original motion by Councilman College, second by Councilman Galloch?
Gordon Galloch, Cameron George.
Cameron George, I'm sorry. Do we, do you have any discussion? Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman Galloch?
No further.
Jackson, George, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lipscomb. Have a good night. That brings us to business agenda item number five, consideration of a conditional use major permit that would allow recreational RV on an individual lot in a Merck MW mixed-use recreational commercial Mary Walker zoning district, 3124 Mary Walker Drive, GPC number 23-19-CU, PID number 87010052.000, by our planning director, Mr. Scott Ankersen.
Yes, sir. Mayor, the planning department has received this request from Robert H. Brown for a special exception that would allow an accessory structure on a lot without primary structure.
Go ahead, David.
The planning department has received this request from Stacy Coleman and Brandon Young for a conditional use major that would allow recreational vehicle on individual lot in the Merck MW mixed-use recreational commercial district at 3124 Mary Walker Drive. The application fee of 250 was paid on May 11, 2023, and all public notice requirements have been met. Some general features of the project, it's approximately 0.43 acres. It's in a Merck MW mixed-use recreational commercial district. The existing land use is a mobile home, which I believe they intend to remove, this mobile home that's existing, and comprehensive plan's future land use designation is recreational commercial. I've included the review criteria for major conditional use is outlined in 4.17.5 of the UDO, along with the applicant's responses to those. Upon hearing this case, the planning commission recommends the city council approve their request based on the evidence presented meeting the criteria of the UDO. The city council may approve the conditional use major, approve the conditional use major with changes, or deny the conditional use major. I've included the excerpt from the 6/23 meeting with the complete packet, and the applicants are here tonight answering questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ankersen. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number five? Do we have an emotion from council for approve a conditional use major permit that would allow recreational vehicles on that individual lot in the Merck MW mixed-use recreational commercial Mary Walker zoning district, 3124 Mary Walker Drive, GPC number 23-19-CE, PID number 87010052.00Z.
I make a motion, we approve the conditional use major based on planning commission's recommendation.
Got a motion by Councilman College?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
For the applicant, I was reading the excerpt from the planning commission. Is the intent to remove the existing manufactured home prior to creating a recreational vehicle?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. That's the only question I have. Thank you. Councilman Galloch?
Everybody should be aware that in this particular area, there is recreational vehicles, house trailers, everything else. It's called a Merck, multi-use recreational conditional stuff down there, so, for what is on concern, this is allowed in that particular area.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No comment.
We got a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman George, all in favor? Motion carries. You just go to the planning department, they'll help you tomorrow. Business agenda item number six, consideration of a special exception that would follow, would allow an accessory structure to be located on a lot without a primary structure in an R1 low-density single-family residential district, Trade Winds Drive, Gochay, Mississippi, GPC number 23-20-SE, PID number 8386300014.050, by planning director, Mr. Scott Ankersen.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning department has received this request from Robert H. Brown for a special exception that would allow accessory structure on a lot without primary structure in R1 low-density single-family residential zoning district on Trade Winds Drive. The application fee of $250 was paid on May 16, 2023, and all public notice requirements have been met. Some general features of this proposed project, the lot is approximately 0.24 acres. The current surrounding zoning is R1 low-density single-family residential, and the comprehensive plan's future land use designation is low-density residential. Again, I've included the special exception. Criteria is outlined in our UDO in Section 4.16.4. And upon hearing this case, the planning commission recommends the city council approve the special exception as presented, with the condition that the owner provide a noise barrier to the west for the Skiba tank compressor, and the carport is to be located on the west side of the existing accessory structure. The city council may approve the special exception, approve the special exception with tangents, or deny the special exception. Again, I've included the excerpt from the meeting and the packet, and the applicant's here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Ankersen. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number six? Any public comments? Do we have a motion from council to accept the planning commission's recommendation for a special exception that would allow an accessory structure to be located on a lot without a primary structure in an R1 low-density single-family residential district, Trade Winds Drive, Gochay, Mississippi, GPC number 23-20-SE, PID 86300014.050? Have a motion by Councilman Galloch, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
I understand the applicant lives directly across the street from this property, is that correct? I know it doesn't have a primary structure, and it was asked at the planning commission, but is there, you know, for accessory structures, when it has a primary, when there is a primary structure, there's a certain allowable square footages for overall accessory structures. Does that work in this case here? Because he's got, you know, a boathouse, two different structures on there, so trying to verify that we're abiding by our, as far as the square footage is, because that's gotten us in trouble in the past.
This is not allowed use only by special exception. There would be no way for the planning department to determine the square footage limit. If we wanted to put one on, we would need to do the special exception. He proposed, and he said the size was out here, so...
Yeah.
It's a condition that it's limited to the size proposed.
Okay, and there was, was there any opposition to this at all?
There were some neighboring property owners here at the planning commission meeting, speaking in opposition at first, and then I believe during the meeting, they worked out their differences, and that's when the planning commission decided to add the two conditions that you see in your package.
I guess they're not here tonight, those, those rest of itself. All right, that's all I have, thank you. Councilman Galloch?
Isn't this in addition to an accessory structure that's already there? He's adding, I think, a carport or something on one side?
Yes, sir.
So there's already existing structures there, he's just adding to one of them, adding a grandeur.
Well, actually, I believe this, this structure was already put up on the property without permit, and we got a call and went out and discussed with the applicant that he needed a permit, and that's kind of what got the ball rolling on this whole situation. He realized that there were, was already existing, an existing accessory structure on the property, which his grandfather's been there for years, but for him to add anything else to that property, accessory structure, realized without a primary structure...
But he's adding to the existing structure that's already there on one side, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No comment.
We have a motion by Councilman Galloch, second by Councilman George, all in favor? Motion carries. Mr. Brown, you can go to planning commission in the morning. That brings us to business agenda item number seven, authorization to advertise for requests for professional, proposals for a professional services contract for the operations, maintenance, and management of the city of Gochay's Department of Public Works by city manager Ms. Shancy.
Yes, Mayor, your public works contract for your service provider expires in November Yes, Mayor, your public works contract for your service provider expires November of 2023. For many reasons, we went ahead and went out for, want to go out for proposals, not just for budgeting purposes, but for transitional purposes. The advertisement must comply and will comply with the 31713, which is the purchasing law, and it's a solid, solid, solid weight provision. But this is an RST. It will be evaluated based on the characteristics that are set forth in that statute. A company should be selected, will be selected by y'all to negotiate with, um, and then you will have the power to negotiate. Uh, it has some safeguards in it, which I sent it all to you ahead of time. Um, it has the minimum staffing, it has ditch marks that must be met, it has a retainage, just to name a few things. But this is for all of the public works. That includes street maintenance, water, sewer, wells, the whole enchilada.
Whole enchilada.
Thank you, Ms. Shancy. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number seven? Do we have a motion from council, authorization to advertise for the request for proposals for professional services contract for operation, maintenance, and management of the city of Goche's Department of Public Works?
Sir, move.
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No discussion.
Councilman Galat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson? Councilman George?
No comment.
All in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number eight. Approve the docket of claims, the city clerk has provided them to us in our packets. Also, they've been published online, um, so she has done her presentation, um, Ms. Montgomery, and, um, our deputy clerk who's here, Ms. Sherry, um, tonight. Any public comments on business agenda item number eight? Do we have a motion by council?
Make a motion, we approve the docket of claims provided, that all entries thereon are true, correct, properly entered, and not fraudulent.
We have a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman George, any discussion, starting with Councilman Alvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
No.
I mean, Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No college.
Councilman Galat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No comment.
All in favor? Motion carries. I seen that Councilman Anderson was awake. That brings us to our consent agenda. Consent agenda, all items will be approved in one motion unless somebody wants to, um, remove one. That's one, approval of minutes from regular council meeting held June the 6th, 2023. Two, authorization to enter into a grant sub-agreement with Jackson County for the Mississippi municipality and county water infrastructure grant program for funding related to Highway 90, sanitary sewer and water line, Singan River Mall project. Three, receive May 2023 privilege license reports. Four, authorization to accept monetary donations for the city of Goche's youth football league. Five, approval of the lease purchase agreement with Cadence Bank for five, five 2023 Ford police interceptor SUVs. Six, approval of an interlocal agreement between the city of Goche and Jackson County. Seven, authorization to renew the professional services agreement with Seymour Engineering for General Services. Eight, approval of water and sewer adjustments for June 2023 in the amount of $9,180.29. Authorization, nine, authorization to acknowledge requests for proposals and award contract for disaster debris removal services. Ten, authorization to acknowledge requests for proposals and award contract for disaster debris monitoring services. And eleven, authorization to acknowledge requests for proposals and award contract for disaster debris response services and supply firms. Do we have a motion to approve one through 11?
Sir, move.
We have a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Galat, all in favor? Motion carries. That brings us to our study agenda. Well, the private apartment, y'all got the sign and sheet. Okay, we have by ordinance 30 minutes for city, citizen comments. The time is 7:05. You have three minutes to speak when you come.
Take it 7:06.
7:06, and you have three minutes to speak when you come, when you state your first and last name and address to the podium. Lindsey Miller.
Lindsey Miller, uh, I live at 2605 Pine Rivers Drive. First of all, we'll thank everybody for, uh, the members of the staff, and thank for their service and hard work to this patient community. Trying to educate myself on some of the, uh, things, the magnetization of how this all works. Councilman Jackson, very kind to answer a lot of questions, uh, he was, I mean, it's been fortunate, I guess, to get here early to take these, I really he educates us.
I enjoy it.
You know, I know there's, like I said, I'm trying to educate myself on a lot of the individual items that go on, magnetizations of the, how, uh, the city government works, and I love our, uh, neighborhood. We moved in down here, uh, right after Katrina, I think, in like seven?
Six.
Six. And, uh, got great neighbors, everybody gets along. I do have concerns, there's like these rainstorms and things, we're seeing a lot of, uh, sewage backing up, still seeing a lot of that, and, uh, I don't know where you all on that, but, uh, just about every time there's a rainstorm, you're seeing that, and they come out, I guess they put lime or something, talc, or I'm not sure what they're doing here, but, uh, I'm concerned about that. But, uh, also concerned, you know, besides the regular city business that goes on, uh, the, you know, the loftier goals are being developed, that's, uh, trying to educate myself on what's going on there, and, uh, you know, I heard a couple million dollars proposed for, you know, a bid over here, you know, the contractor for the green lawn or whatever.
Kind of common.
Common, pardon.
So, you know, I mean, I know that sounds like a lot of money, but it's not.
Oh, it's a lot of money.
I've done a lot of, you know, I don't know, I don't know what is in the coffers and, you know, you have to allow, uh, government grants, this stuff. Councilman Jackson?
Mr. Miller, your three minutes is up. So you can continue, unfortunately, we'll move on, but we will reach out to you, or after the meeting, we'll be glad to speak to you also, so we will answer your questions.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Lisa Miller, you have three minutes.
I'm Lisa.
Councilman College is going to hold this one minute up when it gets one minute left, okay?
Uh, I live at 260500, Henry Doris is our councilman, thanks for, um, fixing that road for us, so we can drive on the right side, see that, but, um, like you said, um, Mr. Doctor did kind of fill some holes and stuff, he was asking about the mall and everything that's going on, maybe how long? And, um, the water issues, you're always going to ask, that's questionable. Anyway, I mean, you know, like, like you said, we do, we have a great neighborhood, we all belong, we help one another, and, um, we've never had any issues in Point Clear, and everybody walks around every street, you know, sees a stray animal, or one of them's lying, but we all pick up and, and, you know, help each other out and stuff, and it's just a great little city, we all stick, you know, moving and moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. We thank y'all for taking time to come. Louis McLendon?
I'm Louis McLendon, I live at 2416 River Cove, down in Point Clear. Uh, you know what I'm thinking of, that's my councilman right there, and he's done a great job down in Point Clear.
Thank you.
The question I have is basically along the same lines, and maybe even from a legal aspect, from the city attorney. Why does Belk hold the city of Goche hostage? Why can we not buy them out? Why can we not move forward with the mall property by simply buying out Belk and moving off? It's, it seems to me, from what I see in the media and what's going on, that they control us, we don't control them. Is that fair? Who knows? Code enforcement in this city, I've had an issue with code enforcement, I've dealt with my issue with code enforcement, you're well aware of that. We dealt with that situation, uh, I would like to see, in my opinion, a little bit more equality in code enforcement, because if I can't, why can he? And it's the same issue. It's the exact same issue. If you're going to call me down on code enforcement for one situation, and my neighbor's got the identical situation, why is that not being dealt with? Even when I file a complaint? Not to get back at him, just simply to make it equal. Let's make it equal. Okay? I can't run a business out of my house, neither can anybody else in the residential neighborhood. Since then, I have moved to a commercial lot, I'm working on establishing a business in Goche, I would like to have a business in Goche that's legit with my taxes being paid, with everything being the way it should, but I don't want to go through all that trouble, it's costing me three times more money now than I used to have to spend to do the little tiny business I do, okay? If I've got to spend more money to have a legit business, why do neighbors get away with having business and not having it? If I have heavy equipment in my yard, which I did not, I have a utility trailer, why is it okay for my neighbors to have tractors in their yard? Is that not heavy equipment, running a lot? The city of Goche, we need to move forward, we need to be a diverse community, we need to quit fighting, squabbling, and all the bull going on. Why can we not have community projects where we volunteer to give our labor to you to help this city? Consider that, if you will. Will work.
That would be great.
If you will open up some opportunities.
We're all the time asking for volunteers. Thank you, Mr. McLendon. Mr. DeMarcus Hughes?
Breathe. Good evening to the mayor, and to the city's councilmen, and to Councilman of Wardford, Rusty Anderson.
Mr. Where do you picture address?
Oh, 1919 Martin Luft Road, Goche, Mississippi. First of all, I just want to say thank you to Mayor Vine for dealing with this situation the way you have. We really appreciate your leadership, and also to the councilmen who have gone and worked with it, we really appreciate it, that we had a former mayor, I think it was Mayor Toe Jam or something, that was, yeah, so we just, I really want to appreciate you for that. I, to piggyback off of the citizen who said, um, equality, he's looking for equality in business and quality inside of his neighborhood. I'm here to speak about equality just in people. We had an, I'll tell you, allegedly, uh, Mr. Rusty Anderson makes some very egregious comments on Facebook, basically calling for the genocide of, uh, black people attending a spring break event, um, and he was like, you know, killed himself, and looking up afterwards. And he offered, um, his version of proof that it was not him, and in my opinion, it just was not sufficient. It was kind of a slap in the face to think that that would be appropriate, in my opinion, that, um, it just was not efficient, it, it wasn't something that we could take on. You know, racism is heavy, we feel it's tense. It is, um, burdensome, it's, it's, it's arrogant, it's, uh, moody, and it's just not good. The city of Goche, to me, is a very nice city, it has great, uh, a great place where there's a family to, to bring friends. Um, it's in between, um, some great places, and it's a really pocket city. And this type of behaviors, from alleged behavior from one of our councilmen, just does not look good for business. I'm not here to judge your character, I couldn't care less allegedly if Mr. Rusty Anderson is a racist. I couldn't care less allegedly if Mr. Rusty Anderson is a bigot, or anything he wants to be, it's, we're in America, you can do whatever you want to do. But I don't think businesses, thank you so much, Councilman Collins, I don't think businesses want to associate, even with an allegation that can't be proven or attempted to be proven, incredibly, in a false way, I don't think business wants to bring money to a place where someone believes that because of this skin that ages and gets ashy and, and cracks, is less than a human. And I'm not going to judge you morally, I don't care who anyone is in their private life, with their friends, their family, but when my tax dollars are paying for someone to look at me, a taxpaying citizen, um, as someone who's less than human, I don't appreciate it, and I don't think the citizens of this city appreciate it. And I don't think the businesses that want to come here, or people who want to create families here, appreciate it as well, so I just think we should continue to keep the heat on individuals who are being paid by taxpayer dollars to make sure that their language is appropriate when you are a public figure.
Mr. Hughes.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. That brings us to Mary Tanes.
Mayor DeFester Tanes, 2001 Glen Cove Drive, Goche, Mississippi. My condolences to Richard Jackson, because I was part of the that attacked.
No, we love talking, if you just got here early, if I got here early, I would have done it also.
I would have tattooed his IW and congratulated him and everything else. Rusty, I appreciate all y'all, thank you so much. To follow that discussion, I'm embarrassed that we're still dealing with that, because at this point, we have got to decide, are we still going to sit and stir the pot, are we going to get up, dust ourselves off? Everybody makes mistakes, not saying anybody didn't or did, that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying I'm here today as a taxpayer that lives in Goche, being a proud resident of Biloxi, Mississippi, I moved over here because I married a wonderful guy, and I'm in a nice neighborhood, I'm in a nice subdivision, I'm in a nice city. The problem I have, or the concern I have, is my subdivision. I live in Westgate, beautiful subdivision, I was, I was in awe when I first went into it, when my mother-in-law was still alive, God rest her soul. It's the first subdivision you see as you get off of the interstate. We're very proud of our Westgate sign, except other people aren't. It's the third time it has been demolished. It is the third time we have literally gone out there, picked up the bricks, and I still don't know the precious lady's name that supplies us with flowers, but her husband has helped resurrect that thing three times now. I was upset, and I will tell you that, there was four of us the other day trying to pick up the bricks and straighten it up, and a police officer, God love him, young little man, um, he said, uh, y'all are disturbing people driving. That told, that spoke volumes right there. If four people at a pole around a, around a broken sign is getting people's attention, we need to speak to the city to help us make it a beautiful entrance, because if that's doing that, then that's what we want. Number two, the median, I called city manager, I've asked her, how many times can we get somebody out there to clean up our median? We've got individuals having to spend their own time to cut the grasses, to edge it, we got trees that are literally swinging when you drive past them. And our Goche finest, they can literally get into the median behind one of those bushes, because you can't see them anywhere, because they're so overgrown. If we have a contract with some company, I with some company, I think it's called, what is it, the name of the company that handles that?
Well, others.
If we've got a contract with them, why are we paying them? We have citizens doing the job they should be doing. And I'm not the only one to complain. We do have a group of people that are gonna get together. We're gonna give y'all a design. We're gonna submit it to y'all, see what you think. We're gonna try and get the homeowners together to handle that. And we're gonna try and make it what he just, what the police officer said.
Let's tie it for one minute.
It's drawing attention. That's what we want. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. And yes, we look forward to that nice new sign you got him on. That brings us to Richard Jackson.
I mean.
He confused everybody.
You got a doppelganger, huh?
Good evening. My name is Richard Earl Jackson.
And make sure you give us
And I'm Earl Jackson.
I'm at forty-five forty-eight Elster Street in Moss Point, Mississippi. Now, I am the first vice president of the Jackson County branch of the NAACP. After following up that young lady back there, she wished that we could get, you know, get past this, that's why I'm here. I've been here at you guys' meeting. I never caused any problems. I am the person that's in charge of Mr. Clark is not here. Therefore, as a citizen of this state, we all should get along. I am a United States law and veteran, so I thought that you have a right to say whatever it is you want to say, as long as it's not a fine bill. But when you offend somebody, you do not get the opportunity to tell them when they should be tired. The only thing that we want as a people is to get along with everybody in this country. I can get along with you. I can get along with you. And I respect you. I've never treated you with any disrespect. But I sat there last week, and even though you might not appreciate what those men say about you, you turned around and you addressed them all in a negative way. I do not know you guys' history. However, it could have been addressed differently. You spend more time concerned about feces running in the house than you do about an alleged post. My thing is, Mr. Anderson, here's the thing, and, and I'm not trying to be facetious, okay? If you would just apologize and say, hey, look, I didn't do this. It wasn't on my Facebook page. Let's get together as a community. Because I shop in Goshay. I own property up and down in this country. You know, the one thing I can't do, I can't be offensive to anybody. And if I am, you know what I do? I apologize. Sometimes, even when I'm not wrong. You know why? Because it's bigger than me. And right now, this is bigger than me and you, if you can follow what I'm saying. So Mayor Vine, I appreciate, you know, how you acted. You know, toward the veteran guy, and I said that earlier. The council, I thank you guys for allowing me to be able to speak. Mr. Anderson, I hope that you can find, you know, some common ground so that we can, as the lady said right there, get past this. Okay? And let's get back to being where we are in the state of Mississippi. Because everybody in Mississippi gets along. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Thank you for your service. Mr. Lipscomb, were you just wanting to comment on your poster? You wanted to comment just on your agenda item?
Wait just for signing the name.
Okay. Same for you, Ms. Lipscomb. Okay, good. Well, we glad y'all signed.
Yeah.
Next, Billy Booth.
Billy Booth, fourteen oh five Hillcrest Street, Ward Four residence. I stand today for two reasons. First of all, I want to address a comment made in the councilman comment section in the last council meeting on June the sixth. In that meeting, I was personally called out, and it was stated that I am only asking for Councilman Anderson's resignation because of quote-unquote sour grapes. In that, I lost my councilman bid against him six years ago. It was further stated that I did not even have the courtesy to call and congratulate Councilman Anderson when I lost. I want to make it public known that none of this, what he said about me in that meeting, is true. I am not bitter, vindictive, or having a sour grapes of losing against Councilman Anderson. If I had sour grapes, I would have ran against him in two thousand twenty-one and would have beat him. I am one hundred percent sure that I called Councilman Anderson on June the sixth, two thousand twenty, two thousand seventeen, in the eight o'clock hour to congratulate him on his win. I do not have my phone records at this time, but I do have this. I would like to present this to you. I have original Sun Herald newspaper dated July the ninth, two thousand seventeen. In it, I purchased an ad that says, "To Goshay and Ward Four residents. Thank you all for those who, thank you to all of those who supported me in the recent election. I should never forget your kindness shown towards me. I would like to congratulate Mayor Torjusson and the newly installed city council. I encourage us all to stay engaged and to do all we can to support them. Respectingly yours, Billy Ray C. Booth." Now, I paid for this ad to congratulate you. I want you to know, I definitely picked up the phone and did a free phone call. And I will, I'm working on getting that and showing that to you. Also, I did a free Facebook post. I think this board, manager, and staff need to evaluate the rules of decorum and ethics for this body to ensure elected officials and city employees are operating in a competent manner. Because this city can be liable for their actions. I think Councilman Anderson was wrong by calling my name out with false accusation. But he also called other names out in unprofessional manner. And since he is a Christian, nice of Columbus, I'm sure when he gave his comments tonight, he would give a public apology for what he did. Secondly, I stand asking for Councilman Anderson to resign for lack of verifiable and conclusive evidence that his Facebook page was hacked on April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three. We talked about moving on, but the thing was, was you should prove that you've been hacked or to resign. You have not proven, and you are still sitting there.
Thank you, Mr. Booth. Mr. Benny Coleman?
Benny Coleman, fourteen twelve Glenco Street, Mississippi. Oh, good afternoon. Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I, uh, believing, trying to get to heaven. I've been discriminated against. And I'm, you know, life is, uh, trying to do what God wants to do. And I ain't got nothing to do with, uh, I believe in a, a person to do what, you know, what they want to do in life, or whatever they feel like they, you know, say what they, you know, as long as they don't hurt anyone else's feelings. So, uh, the alleged comment, it was, it was hurtful. But we should, uh, think about things that we say to one another and do what God wants to do. God gave us a map. Gave us the Holy Bible to live by. And he, he wants to love everyone. He don't, uh, it's not just white loving white, black loving black. Wants to love everybody, each one of us, uh, love to another. That's what God wants to do. So that's what, uh, we should do in Goshay. And we want to see us, we go to these football games. All we cheer for our team, Goshay. All of us get together and cheer. We don't care who, what, what color they are. We cheer for one another. We cheer for our children. And we want our children to get along with one another and love one another. And that's what, uh, we are, that's what we should be all about. So, uh, I'm not an elected official. I don't want to be one because I know that, uh, it's not, you know, I wouldn't want to be there. So we just want to suggest, if you're an elected official, you should represent everybody. Don't, uh, just represent certain people, certain, certain ones in college parks or Rudy Kabila or, or Westgate. Pick and choose what you gonna do. So that's what I, I feel about that. I mean, you, you should, uh, let it go if you did, uh, this is what, this is how you feel about. Allegedly, I won't say allegedly, that's how you feel. Should let it go. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Ms. Ellen Moore?
Down one and twenty, Westgate Parkway. First of all, I want to ask the councilman, you all have stated that if he do not prove his innocence, you would ask him to resign. And he has not proven that. And you all know that. So I'm asking you all to do what you are here to do. Ask him to resign. He has been very defiant. He knows he is not proving that. I'm not an IT person, but you said Facebook gave you this. You haven't shown anything to anyone that Facebook showed you. So what have you proven to them? Nothing. So I'm asking you guys to ask him to step down because he is not proving his innocence. You need to go.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Mr. Charles Moore?
Uh, good afternoon, Mayor, Councilman. All I gotta say
Your address, Mr. Moore. Your address.
Nineteen twenty, Westgate Parkway, Goshay, Mississippi. All I gotta say, Rusty Anderson, what he allegedly said, you know, that's, that's, that's very bad what he said about black. If you, y'all keep on letting him sit there and do it, I know y'all say y'all can't do that. But he do need to resign. Resign immediately.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. And our last citizen comment is maybe Keith?
Ken Truitt.
Ken? Yes, Mr. Truitt.
I'd like to waste my three minutes, but I'd like to say I agree with what's been said tonight.
Okay. Okay. That brings us now to, that's our citizen comments. That brings us to our council comments. Council, it's second meeting of the month, so we will start with Councilman Eldon.
Scott, in reference to the address on Hastings Road, it's across from the church, Martin bluff Baptist Church. I know we've had this, the property owner in here before. I think she's from out of state. Now that property's starting to grow up again, and I'm starting to get complaints about it. Can we address that again with her?
Yes, I agree with that.
Chief Bevler, I brought it to the attention of several officers in reference to Lima Drive. We're still having complaints in reference to possible drug dealing at that park, that park up there. Also, the loud music. If you could have some officers maybe extra patrol that area and try to run the ones that don't belong to that park off. Of course, I appreciate it. Clearwater, the tree that's right there across from Lima Drive that's over our sidewalk, is there any way we can trim that up?
On Martin bluff?
Yes, ma'am. It's right by Grandview.
I spoke with Mr. Decapell, and we have a, he's already issued the PO to have the dent tree and the rhizome cut back so that it will be clear.
Okay, good. I guess
I'm just waiting on the, the contractor to come and do the work.
Okay. Also, I'd like to thank the, the city employees, police, fire, public works, wage probe. Everybody makes this city run. I appreciate what you do because we couldn't do it without you. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Anderson?
Oh, yes. Mr. Jackson, you don't know how sorry I am that something like this was put on someone else's Facebook page. This was not on my Facebook post, not on my page. Alleged comment that somebody made on somebody else's post. And I proved the best that I could by having my Facebook files sit here to me and went to an attorney and an IT person that looked at them. And there's, and these files do not lie. There is no such post by me or comment by me on my Facebook files. And I haven't had anybody come forward proving that I did do it. None whatsoever. Mr. Booth, I said you did not call me personally, and you did not call me personally. You put this in a paper, yes, you did. And I went to your office several times and you, you, I think you did say something to me in your office in, in a congratulatory way. But I said, you did not call me personally that night or the next day, and you didn't.
Down three. I'm gonna work on three.
Mr. Mrs., I mean, Mr. Mr. Coleman, I want you to know that I do represent everybody in my ward. It doesn't matter color, race, or anything like that. I've always represented everyone in my ward. And I've even helped people in other wards. And I've never disrespected any African American in my ward in no way whatsoever. Miss Tori, I've treated her with total respect, and everybody I've ever talked to in the Cambridge Square area and Westgate area and the other area, total respect. Never disrespected any black person in my life in that, in any of my ward. Mr. and Mrs. Moore, no one has proved that I did this. And I proved the best of my ability without filing a lawsuit and getting a summons from a court order to order Facebook to send anything. But they sent me my files, and my files prove that I did not do this. That's all I got.
Councilman Collins?
I'm gonna sum up on what some of the residents said during their citizen comments. I love this city. This is one of the few cities on the coast that is extremely diverse. It doesn't matter what your race is, what your economic income is, what your sexual orientation is. Everybody here is very diverse. Doesn't matter, and I live in the Hickory Hill area. It doesn't matter what your income is. You can live in a manufactured home. You could live in a stick-built home. It doesn't matter. We're inclusive, and everybody's welcome. And that is not only here in Goshay, but that's along the coast. We are, and a lot of people are not going to like what I'm saying, this. We are very liberal when you think of Mississippi Gulf Coast. We are very acceptance of everybody. And that's the way I live. That's the way I feel. That's the way I love. And that's the way I want people to feel about this city. That's all I have to say.
Mayor Massing one more time.
Thank you. Justice Councilman Anderson.
From the Bible, it says, "Judge not, lest you be judged." Matthew seven one. And I learned a lot from this, that I will never prejudge anyone for any reason after going through this. That's all I got.
Councilman Collins, were you finished?
I'll just add one last caveat.
Okay.
I've been, uh, through several elections, and not once have I had any of my opponents call me and congratulate me the night of the win or the day after.
I wanted to say the same thing. I wanted to say the same thing. So Councilman Anderson, good thing you got a paid ad.
That's pretty different.
That's pretty different, yeah. I've had people call me in Congress.
And I've had people call me in council.
I did call you.
Go ahead. Councilman Gollum?
I've been here thirty-seven years. I enjoy it. I ain't going nowhere. This is a great city. Amen. Amen.
Councilman Jackson?
Well, of course, I've been here all of my life, so it's fifty-two years. So I'm fifty-two years old, born and raised here in Goshay. Luckily, I was born in the house, so I'm definitely a Goshay citizen. It's a house call. So, um, yeah, so I, I agree, you know, as the city has, has grown, it has grown diversity. Of course, I experienced the same as any other African American. We experience discrimination right here in the city of Goshay. When I was a little boy, I can remember a cross being burned several times. And one was in my community. was in my community. See, I know you thought that I was, it was a long, long time ago, but it was not that long ago. Um, so, um, and I remember this clearly, vividly, because I can remember my father running them out of the community. Um, and I was right there with him. Strangely, a little child was right there with him, and I'm in the car with him, and you know, and it's just a, um, a shocking feeling. It never, it never leaves your head. So, um, I don't want to get too deep into that, but anyway, I got a few things that I want to address. Uh, when you asked about Mr. McGlenn...
McGlendon?
McGlendon, okay. You asked about the business license. There are business licenses that you can apply for, for your home, like your home business, but you just can't be like a store, you know? It's a different type of business. You can't have a whole bunch of, like, you're selling products out of your house or anything like that.
I have some listed commercial property. I've got commercial property.
Yes, sir.
Through my business.
Yes, sir.
I've been getting set up with a license and getting it set up.
Okay.
That means I have.
And I also want to thank Clearwater for cutting the trees on Latney and also responding to the drainage issue I had on CW Web. Uh, and I'm praying for Moss Point, they had some real issues. Um, of course, I'm a big advocate of Moss Point, even though I'm from Goche. I've been in that, in that community. I used to work a lot, do a lot of community service in Moss Point, um, of course, because I'm African American. I'm, you know, I go with the people who are seriously needed. I work in the community to improve it, to see it a better place, just as I've done on the south side of Goche. Uh, it's a different pride when you, uh, when you're working in the community like that. It's a different type of pride. You want to see equality for everyone, so you have to fight for that. That's why you see the gentlemen here, they're here, even though it may feel uncomfortable when you're here with, um, people feeling, uh, unat ease with what has been allegedly said. But just understand that, uh, that we've been through this numerous of times throughout our lives, so we know we got to fight. We know we got to stand up. We don't, we can't allow something to continue over and over and over, so we do what it can. We do what we do, and we use the methods that we know that would help make life easier for us, because we're used to being targeted. So with that being said, so I explained to you a history of how I was able to see the Klan burn crosses in my neighborhood, showing you that, hey, we've been fighting for a long time. So what you see in this community, see, when you see them come in and, uh, addressing this issue is heartbreaking. Uh, it's hard to believe, because it's 2023, um, you know, that someone would, you know, allegedly, you know, whether he did or not, I'm just saying, if something was on Facebook, that someone would post this on Facebook, that any, whoever it is that posted, that they would post something like this on Facebook or anywhere, or address anyone like this at this day and time, when this is a time where people are moving forward. Um, society is changing, you know? Things are progressing. Uh, you know, when you look at the people, and I'm not trying to take too long, but um, when you look at the people in my community now, we got people who are valedictorian, they're, um, educated people with, um, uh, business minds, and they've done great things within this city and abroad, uh, right out of my neighborhood, just highly intelligent people, the youth that should really change, um, how people project us. And they've shown out, you know? They've shown that, hey, that we are demanding for equality, whether we get it or not. Our actions of us improving our community and developing it on our own and moving forward is showing that we're demanding equality. Um, and I have, just to understand what my connection with Mr. Billy Booth, Mr. Reverend Billy Booth, is that we grew up together. He grew up in the same neighborhood I'm in. So we're friends, like family, you know? So, um, I, I, um, love his compassion for this community. He wants to see changes just like anybody else. I hate that it's a, it's a division with, um, political division, because political vision is just nasty, you know? So a lot of people, you know, when it goes, get political, you're going to see nasty stuff. People are going to do things that, you know, and I've seen background stuff that was done against me. People didn't know that I knew about it. I already knew about it. I just didn't, I just didn't speak on it. I just don't address that. I don't let it get out on me. I just keep moving forward, because I know my works is going to reflect. No matter what you say, when you mention my name in the community, they're going to tell you, by words is going to reflect. There's nothing you can say that you can't say, he is not doing what he's supposed to. Uh, I'm going to do over and beyond, because I'm a worker harder. I can't help it. It's just, I work a lot, so I'm going to go beyond. You're not going to be able to keep up with me. My work is going to reflect. I'm going to make sure that. You're going to see the work ethic in it, you know? So, um, but anyway, I'm going to close out, you know? I don't want to drag on too long, because I know this is a, you know, it's a touchy subject, and I just want to be respectful, and I'm hoping everybody, we do move forward, and I pray that we all learn from this and move forward, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman George?
Uh, that's for a second. A lot of what, uh, Councilman Jackson said, you know, I've watched him over the last six, going on seven years, and he's really impressed me. He's an upstanding citizen, an excellent councilman. Everybody knows it throughout the state. That's why he was unopposed in this last round, and he probably will be unopposed this next round. Um, unlike everybody else up here, I'm from Moss Point, so just want to remind you all to keep them in your prayers. I had family and friends in the middle of the tornado. It's devastating. It's bad. There's a lot of damage and a lot of homeless people right now. Don't forget them. It's rough. Other than that, I hope everybody has a good night.
Thank you, Councilman George. I just want to thank all of our city staff for all your hard work and, um, over the last few weeks. Also, I want to thank all that have been working in the thunderstorms that we've been having. But as you heard tonight, please keep Moss Point, Mayor Knight and his team, his employees and his citizens, in your thoughts and prayers. He has continuously reached out. As four mayors in Jackson County have quarterly meetings, we communicate in a group message as needed, um, very frequently, and I can assure you, um, he is, all three of his sister cities are on standby. Um, and thank our police and fire chief for reaching out to their chiefs in Moss Point also right after the tornado hit, offering our assistance. I also want to thank, um, Chastity and her recreation staff. We had movie night due to inclement weather, and we had to stop in the middle of the movie, but we did have a good attendance. And also thank her staff for all the events they have been doing at Baco Park and providing to the youth down there and all over our city to come and support those activities. I want to echo what Councilman Jackson said tonight, and I think in Councilman College, we are in a diverse community, and we should be proud of it. We should all learn to respect others and get along. We should also not backstab, stick your nose up, roll your eyes, or anything else at other citizens who are speaking at public meetings or in general. I also feel that Councilman Jackson has gone above and beyond, and he's taught me something ever since the day he was elected. He would have to hear things that he should not have to hear. I don't care if you were born in 1956, my parents didn't use that language, I wasn't raised in that language. But all I can tell you is, he had to hear language since he's been elected, and I'm saying this because I've heard it with my own ears from his counterparts at some given time, since the first day he was elected. I apologize that you've had to listen to that, but kudos to you for being the bigger person. And he said, "Councilman Vaughn, I ain't worried about them. I ain't worried about them." He moves on, but I, deep down inside, it hurt him. As you heard tonight, it hurts him. So I ask that you pray for him, to continue to give him the strength that he has to deal with in our community, and hope people will come forward and just learn to get along. That is gone. We are here, and we're all equal. It don't matter about the color of anybody's skin. And I just pray we can move forward in a positive way. We have a diverse city, employees here in our community, that they all are equal to us. We do not look at the outside of their skin. We don't, I don't look at as citizens outside of their skin. I don't look at, if I hear somebody say, "We have a hood in Goche," I say, "Where?" Because we don't have a hood in Goche, Mississippi. Yes, I've had to hear fellow council people say over the time, they've referred to Latney Road as a certain area. I'll, I'll sit here and tell you, I've heard it multiple times. A shame that I had to hear it, but I stood up and I said, "That ain't the area y'all are talking about," because it's not. We have crime all over the city of Goche. We have shootings all over, and we have shootings all over any city in the state of Mississippi and the US. It's not just one neighborhood. So don't quit labeling neighborhoods, and let's move forward. Ms. Shamsi, you have any comments? Thank you. You're in our thoughts and prayers also. Also, I want to thank all the military personnel who are here tonight. Thank you again for your service, and also thank our public safety for all y'all's service also. Deputy clerk, you have any comments? Mr. Dennis, you have any comments?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion to adjourn until July 5th, Wednesday, July 5th, at 6:30 PM?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Jackson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gallott. All in favor? Motion carries. We're adjourned.